Which was very smart.
Yeah, I was like sitting there blow drying and she was getting her hair done and I was like, uh Lori, you don't want your hair done on?
No.
She was like, will you sit down? Get that on the rug.
That's control, that's control. That's control, we do it while our partner.
I'm passionate about that. One of the ones is this.
But you better know what you're doing.
They have thick hair.
Get out of hand quick.
Like what does she want?
Probably straight. She, I see her wearing her hair straight because she has like dark thick hairs.
I mean, I would just book in for you. I'll see who's open and like, because there's some people that can handle that better than others.
Yeah, I know some people are really excellent at that.
Yeah.
She was setting up the camera for the zoning.
Like Kenzie's great, but she would have a panic attack. Because she just long and like, it's not like, it seems like it's an easy thing to do, but it's hard.
Right.
So like, I wouldn't book her with it.
In Chicago at Charles, I think, like years ago. And then I had like, like roller brushes on my hands. My hair was like this, you know what I mean? And this guy moved to Texas, so you can't go up there anymore. But I mean, they're in state. It was like pageant hair, but it wasn't hard, you know?
Yeah.
Here we were changing the tape on us.
It being five thirty, I'll call this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees to order. If everyone would please stand for a moment of silent prayer or reflection and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Turner, would you, I'm sorry, Clerk Turner, would you please call the roll?
Of course, Mary. Trustee Steinwaddle?
Here.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee DeVor?
Present.
Trustee Simmons?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg? Trustee Riker?
Present.
Thank you all for being here. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on August the fifth. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Riker, seconded by Trustee Simmons. Any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll now go to comments from the audience on agenda items only and ask if anyone wants to make a comment, please come to the podium, give your name, address, and try to keep your comment to five minutes. Comments going once, twice. Comments are closed. We'll move on to old business. The only item I think I was aware of on old business was we had a discussion at the last meeting about the La Hood development and we had pushed it to this meeting. Because it went through zoning last night, we have to give a, I think, a two-week waiting period. Is that, is that right? So that's why you don't see it on this agenda and we'll plan to have that on the September second agenda. And I know Trustee DeVor will be touching on that later.
No.
Any other old business? Okay, we'll proceed to new business and we'll have a presentation by Woodard and Curran. And I'll turn this over to Trustee Simmons to roll out. Trustee Simmons has been working extremely hard, attending multiple meetings a week regarding our water system with Woodard and Curran staff. I attend some of those meetings, but Trustee Simmons is well informed and really taking an active role. So, Trustee Simmons, would you roll this out for me?
Thank you, Mary, appreciate that. I'd first like to just welcome Don Tall with Woodard and Curran to speak on behalf of the projects we've had going on in the Heights. That includes the lead line replacements. And I also would like for him to speak on the preliminary information regarding the filtration system. Thank you, Don, for being here tonight.
Thank you all for having me. I've been here before and I appreciate every time you guys invite me back. So I just wanted to kind of recap before we get to the filtration plant that we're here to, to present, just kind of a recap of how we got here. So back in 2022, the village tasked Woodard and Curran with developing a CIP plan for their water system. And then in February of 2023, we presented that CIP here to all of you. And that included mainly five years of projects that we really need to get going on and then a twenty-year plan for maintenance and other items down the road. We also looked at rates and funding and options to get all that paid for. And what I really want to do is commend you guys of being proactive and immediately starting to implement some of that plan. Because that same year, you asked us to do, start the funding for the filtration plant for the manganese. And we also were tasked with starting the lead service line replacements. And the first thing that we got was forty thousand dollars from Illinois, or I E P A to do an inventory of your system for all lead service lines. So basically, we created a list of all of the services in your village. We listed all the known materials that we could. And then we created a replacement plan that was then submitted to I E P A. And then part of that was using the number that we got for unknowns in leads and putting in for an application for lead service line replacements in the fall of twenty-three. Unfortunately, Peoria Heights was passed up that year and we got zero. And several other of our communities didn't get any either. We also put in for the manganese because we developed a design basis report of what we were going to do, submitted that to I E P A in the fall of twenty-three. That one was not allowed to be on that year's funding because I E P A had to approve that design basis report to approve what we were wanting to do. Fast forward another year, we put in again. But in the second year, instead of putting in for one-year replacement, we put in for money for two to make up for the year we didn't get money. And the village was granted two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars that year for lead service line replacements. That was one hundred percent grant, no out-of-pocket for the village. And we also, and that project is actually underway right now. The contractor's out in the field doing those replacements. I do have a summary if anybody wants to know where they're at. But then we also, last fall, did another application for another round of lead service line replacements. This July, they awarded the village three million and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Of that, two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand is forgiven. And then you'll end up with a five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar loan. That loan is a zero-interest loan over forty years. So it's basically fourteen thousand dollars a year for three million dollars. Pretty good. And then last fall, we put in for the manganese filtration. And in July, they awarded eight millions, five hundred thousand dollars towards that filtration plant. Of that eight point five million, seven point one million is forgiven. So no payback on seven point one million. At the end of the day, you'll end up with a one point four million dollar loan. And right now, they tell us it's going to be at a one point six two over twenty-eight years. So roughly sixty-five thousand a year for the filtration plant. And that's, when we look at, back on the CIP, we estimated half of the lead service line being granted. And you actually see, received a lot more. And then also on the, the filtration, we didn't know if they were going to give any. So we accounted that as zero grant and you ended up with eighty-six percent, or no. I'm sorry, I didn't calculate that percentage, but a really good percent. Then also this year, we also secured another forty thousand dollars for inventory. And that is strictly to go out and pothole service lines to verify the actual line. The first round was a desktop survey to create the list, create a replacement plan. The second forty thousand that they just gave us is to actually go out and pothole. Not replace, but just investigate all the unknowns that we don't know if they're lead or not. So we can build on that list and, and continue replacing as part of the replacement plan. So just kind of to recap all of that, since 2023, the village has received thirteen million, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So just short of fourteen million dollars. Of that, eleven million, eight hundred and sixty-eight is grant forgiven, not to be paid back. And then you'll end up between the two, just under two million dollars in loans over a multi-year, either zero or low interest. So basically eighty percent of the money that we've received is not, no payback. It's pretty good deal. Just want to let you know where we're at today and how we got here. All right, so to move on, we have a preliminary proposal in front of you. And that is to design, bid, and construct, our engineering side of it, for the manganese filtration plant. Now this is ideally going to sit right next to your existing water treatment plant. It will intercept the water coming from your wells, filter that water, and then send it through your system. So we're looking.
Don, I don't think we have that proposal.
Oh, you don't?
No.
That was not prepared for the evening this evening.
That, okay. That, that was going to be our.
Our next.
Next.
Presentation, yeah.
Oh.
We're just going to skim over everything a little bit, give a preliminary, if you would please, a summary of.
Just a summary, sure. So part of the scope would be us to manage the funding side of it and the project side through design. And then the preliminary work will look at all the existing conditions, existing water quality tests, everything we need for that. And then we'll go into full design of the building, electrical bathroom, and the filters. And then also, that manganese filtration will be set up for future addition for PFAS. We won't do the PFAS, but we're going to make sure that it's ready to go. So when you do get to that point, if the state does mandate that, that we can hook onto the existing system and, and add that. And, you know, as most funding goes, when you have mandatory, there's usually funding involved. Hopefully, that'll be a good one if they, if they implement that. And then we'll go into the interim design, which will be the, kind of the, the final nuts and bolts of the project. And then, you know, we'll do three different meetings with you guys just to look at it, make sure you're good with what we're doing. And we'll also do permitting, so there's permitting involved with that, with I E P A. And then we'll go into the bidding phase, the whole contractual, I E P A coordination, and then the construction administration. So we'll have someone on site when they're doing work and document everything and then be able to close out the I E P A loan, the I E P A permits, and then so the construction closeout. So right now, the goal is to try to get this designed over the winter, through the spring, and then start constru-, or get a contractor under contract next summer. And then depending on deliverables of equipment, there's always a lead time on equipment, buildings, all the materials, so that'll determine the actual construction timeline. So we won't know that until it's under contract and the contractor gives us his schedule. But that's where we're at right now is, the hope is to design this through the winter and have it ready to go to bid next summer.
Can you, is it okay if we ask the question right now?
Don, you all done?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Can you just reiterate exactly where this filtration system will be and what that will entail and?
Okay. Have you been down to the water treatment?
Yes.
So just before you get there, you see a generator sitting there? It's going to be somewhere in there.
Okay.
That's, that was our initial plan, just preliminary for the design basis report. We may have to move the generator, we may not. It depends on the sizing of that generator, if it's even going to work. You know, really don't want to have two generators there. We will if we have to. The, the filtration plant is not, you know, a lot electrical like your regular treatment plant. So there's not a huge demand, but I don't know if that generator will pull both.
So water from all the wells will come through this filtration system plant?
Yep.
And what is like the square footage, for example, of the plant?
So right now, we're looking at three thousand square feet. That was our preliminary look at it. We also now know we have to have a bathroom. There's not a bathroom in the existing plant. So you need a bathroom, you need an electrical room, a skater room, and then a chemical feed room. Because there is chemicals that have to go in before the filter that helps get rid of that manganese through the filtration process. So right now, we're looking at three thousand feet.
Okay, and from my memory, it's been a while since I've been down there and toured it, but they, it's treated with chlorine. So this filtration will eliminate, you just answered part of the question, some chemical will go into it, but it will eliminate the chlorine, the need for chlorine or not?
No.
It will not?
So this will just pull that manganese out. And it also, one of the byproducts is iron, so it should pull some iron out. Once we get the water quality test, we can see what else is in your water.
Okay.
And see what other byproducts we can get out.
Okay.
Some of that's done by chemical before the filtration.
I have one more question, sorry.
Sure.
Great question, yeah. You talked about the PFAS, PFAS. Does that filtration exist? Because when I was touring at American Water, I feel like what they was, they were telling us is that they're working on it, I mean, like nationally, and it didn't exist yet, but does it exist?
It does exist because our office is out east, they are very strict out there. And they, they start this process way before Illinois.
Okay.
They've been under mandates for a long time. So our national leader that's out there, he's done multiple PFAS filtration plants along with manganese and other items. So, yeah, just depends on where you sit in the United States.
Okay, so we'll push for that. That's a good thing, you know? Have we figured out how to get rid of the PFAS though? Like that was kind of talked to us about, like even if we could remove it, what do we do once we remove it?
That's always the question.
Yeah.
Because it takes extremely high heat to break it down. So that, that's something nationally that they're talking about, is how to dispose of it.
Okay.
Because it is a forever chemical. And in order to break that down, it's extremely expensive.
So wasn't most of the PFAS manufactured like in the sixties and seventies?
No, it's in everyday products. Anything that's waterproof.
It's still today, I mean, I've seen.
It's in everything.
Like.
When you see Rhino Shield spraying your roof and spraying your siding.
Yeah.
Anything that's waterproof, a rain jacket, your paper plate that doesn't soak up your, the juices, everything has PFAS anymore.
Okay. If the state doesn't mandate it, which I kind of find hard to believe that they won't, but if they, if they don't and we build out our filtration plant for that capability, why wouldn't we just go ahead and do it, knowing that PFAS is, you know, a pretty?
It's not going to be cheap. And if, if any of that changes, you know, all their mandates, you never know. Every administration's going to be a little different, so.
So if they mandated, would they help pay for it or we?
That's, that's the assumption, just like the lead service line. Even if it's a loan, it's usually a zero-interest loan. But typically, they put grant money in it just because nobody can afford all that.
Would our plant be future-proofed for that change?
Yeah, that's our, that's our goal, is to make sure that this is set up to, you know, the piping is basically it. So once it goes through that filtration, it'll go over there, which actually helps PFAS because it needs clean water to help with the PFAS removal, so.
The, the filtration plant, will that help improve the appearance of brown water?
That is exactly why we're doing this project.
Okay.
If we can remove the manganese and the iron, I think that'll solve what's coming into your system.
Yep.
We can't change what's, what is in your system. One thing that we are doing right now for the village is a hydraulic model. And part of that is developing a flushing system, you know, directional flushing. And I, I don't know if you guys, you got the final one or?
Not the final, but the final, like first stage, first phase, see what it, what all, how it would work and how it would all look.
And the goal is you flush from the plant through your system, so.
Right.
You're continuing just to keep pushing it out.
Yep.
But you have a whole lifetime of.
Right.
Of sediment in your pipes that need to be addressed.
Understood. Can you explain to the audience and people watching at home what manganese is?
No. I am not a chemical good guy.
Okay.
I mean, I know what it is and where we have to take it out, but the actual breakdown of it?
Okay.
But it's a mineral that's coming from the ground.
Right, it's a natural occurring mineral that's present in some fruits as well.
Just like iron.
Right.
Arsenic, it can be in there, radionuclides.
Right.
All that stuff is naturally occurring in your, in your soil. And so when you have a groundwater plant, you're pulling all that natural stuff out of the soil. Who knows what the resource is, I mean? Could come from anywhere.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? Don, I appreciate you coming and giving us an update a little bit on the good work that Woodard and Curran is doing. Thirteen point eight million dollars is extremely impressive. I think Trustee Weisenberg said last meeting that we haven't invested this type of money really in anything ever in Peoria Heights history. So I think, you know, we take this very seriously and I appreciate Woodard and Curran's efforts in getting eleven million or so.
And grant?
Forgiv-, forgivable grants, so.
It's, it's pretty impressive, actually.
And that number doesn't include the one million that Congressman Sorensen secured for the water main on twenty-nine?
I did not include that because, you know, we weren't tasked with getting that money for you.
Okay.
So I did not include it. We may administer it if you guys feel so.
Yeah, so the close to fourteen plus the additional one is fifteen million right now that we've got going into the water system.
And it's really over the last two years.
Right.
Which is really good. And we're going to, September is the deadline for applications. So this September, we'll put in for another round of lead service line. And like I said, the first year we put in for one year of replacement, next year we put in for two. This year, we got another two years worth and we're going to keep going. So we're, we're trying to get ahead of the curve because you never know when this money's going to run out or everything's going to change and just stop.
And I say this a lot and I, I pride ourselves as being a community where we can provide lead service line replacement at no cost to the resident, to the homeowner. A lot of our neighboring communities can't say that. So the efforts of Woodard and Curran go a long way to making that happen. So again, thank you for.
Thank you for entrusting us in it. We really appreciate it.
Hey, Don, you did say you had some updated numbers for the lead line replacements.
Sure.
Do you have those if you could?
Yeah, so just to date, I think as of yesterday, we've investigated or replaced one hundred and thirty-one lines. The goal is one hundred and eleven each year. That'll get us through our plan. But this is a double year, so we're really looking at two hundred and twenty-two. And that's not replaced. That is either replaced or found not to be lead, so we can scratch them off the list. As long as we can scratch one hundred and eleven a year, we're on track. So right now, as of right now on this project, we're at one hundred and thirty-one that we've investigated. Forty of them needed no replacement at all, they were fine. Nineteen of them, just the public side, so just your side of the service line was lead and got replaced. Private, eight, individual, just the private side. And then there was forty-six that were both. It was a full replacement, both yours and theirs had lead. So it was a full replacement from the main into the house. So, so far, seventy-three homes have had lead or galvanized replaced. And then there's eighteen that are known that are pending replacement right now, that they're, they're scheduling out.
Are you seeing the lead lines in specific areas of our community?
We intentionally started with the area that we knew was going to be heavy lead. So we knew that that was going to be, you know, a high replacement number. As you get farther and farther away from downtown and other areas, you're going to find that you're investigating a lot that aren't needing. So that money may stretch a lot farther because it's a lot cheaper just to investigate than it is to replace, so.
Have you had anybody tell you no?
Yes. Homeowners have the option. We, the, the contractor has to go to the homeowner, knock on the door, ask them to sign a consent form to get into the house because they want to go inside and see what's coming through the wall. They'll also go outside and investigate it, but the first line is go inside. If it is lead, then they don't need to investigate outside, they just dig it up and replace it. So it's going to save you money on investigation outside. But it's not always the case that somebody wants you in their house. And if that's the case, then we've, we sign a piece of paper saying refused. And then future replacement of that is on the homeowner. That will still replace the public side, your side. But later on, if that becomes an issue on the private side, it's theirs to replace. It's theirs anyway.
Are you keeping record of the ones that are saying no? So that way, once it's all said and done, we know which houses.
Yep.
Didn't get it replaced.
So we had the initial inventory that we did, a lot of unknowns. And we sent flyers to every house that was an unknown, asked them to self-identify. We did not receive a lot of responses on that, unfortunately. But anything's better than nothing. But what we do is every time they find it, we mark down what it actually is. And if it needs to replace, we mark that down. And we have to submit that every year, or the village does. We, we do all the updates, give it to Chris or, and have them submit on your hat.
So on those houses that have said no, you're doing it all the way up to the curb?
We're doing it up to the, the curb stop, so that's, you know, the village's responsibility on the public side that gets replaced. It's just the private side.
Yeah, I've heard of a couple no's, so I was curious.
So a few follow-up questions to that.
Yeah.
So are we sure these home, so these are homeowners that are refusing or are these tenants?
That's exactly my question, because we have so much rental in our community.
And the follow-up question is that, is do they understand the questions that are being asked of it? Like, do they understand that there's lead in their water pipes?
Yeah, we have to provide them the information of the contaminants and all the harmful things.
I'm just trying to understand why someone would not want their lead line replaced for free.
There are people that do not want you in their space.
It's not about.
Will they legally have to just close that when they, if they sell that house?
That I don't know.
That's, that's why I asked if we were keeping track of the ones that said no because I have a feeling that that could affect ultimately down the road value of the property.
Do we know if that's the homeowner saying no or the tenants?
The contractor is supposed to go with the homeowner.
Homeowner.
Not the tenant. Now I.
Now with the landlord registration program, like can we build it into the landlord registration program that this is like kind of required?
This would fall, this would fall under life, health, safety, so I'd assume so.
Right.
Imagine, imagine the ordinance would have to be changed, but it could be done.
I believe the owner is the person who has to refuse or accept it. They have to accept it too.
My thought is, you know, you know, maybe they're home landlords, you know? Some of them aren't the greatest landlords.
I, I don't believe that has been the case.
Okay.
I believe they've been.
Owners.
Owners of the houses.
Wow. If a, if a landlord does keep a property that would be injurious to the tenant, that would fall under a criminal statute for criminal housing management.
Have you had any, have you had any renting properties say no?
That I don't know.
I do.
I would have to check with the contractor.
I'd, I'd like to know the answer to it if you don't mind.
Sure.
Do you know how many refusals we've had?
No.
I think, I know of at least one. There, there may have been more, but I know at least one.
So for example, if a, a person who owns many houses, has renters in these houses, they're being contacted, the owner is being contacted, and you have to sign a paper that says yes?
Yeah, they have to sign it if they want it or they have to sign it if they don't want it.
Okay.
And if they refuse to sign it, then we just have to fill it out and say, owner refused.
Good faith, good faith effort and they did not respond.
Under most residential leases though, you can't deny the landlord access to the property for maintenance issues and this would fall under that.
Yeah, if the landlord owns it and he said yes, then.
So a follow-up question for you, Chris. You may remember this. So when we replaced the meters in the houses.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they had a choice whether to let us do it or not.
No, we own those meters and, and we have to have access to those meters. And they don't have a choice whether they get a new meter or not. That's our meter, not theirs.
So the same probably wouldn't apply to the, the water lines?
The difference is it's their water line that we're, that we're replacing for them.
Okay.
It's private.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand private property rights. I'm just trying to understand why someone would say, hey, there's lead in your water.
It doesn't make any sense to someone.
Well, just because you have a lead line does not mean there's lead in your water.
I understand, I understand.
Just to be clear.
No, I, I get that. I know that the, the issue was that galvanized to lead thing can cause issues, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, galvanized.
But still, if someone knocked on my door, which I don't think I was selected, I don't think, and they said, hey, you've got a, a lead line in your basement, can we replace it for free? I, here you go, you know?
Most people do, say go ahead, yes.
Right.
But unfortunately, some people don't want you in their property, so.
One out of one thirty-one, not too bad.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, it is their choice.
No, I understand that.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we just have to note it and move on.
Okay, well, thank you, Don. Thank you for your presentation. Any other questions or comments on the board?
I just want to thank you as well, Don. I appreciate your time. Woodard and Curran has been very instrumental in this process and I appreciate.
I just wanna thank you as well, Don. I appreciate your time. Woodard and Kern has been very instrumental in this process, and I appreciate everything that you've got, that you've done with the grants, dealing with the I E P A, and walking us through the process. And I look forward to meeting with you again.
Yeah, more than welcome. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're down to grocery tax discussion with trustee DeVor. I'm gonna just start by saying that this is just a discussion item. No action will be taken on this tonight. It's not an action item. And I have publicly stated that I am against this, what I consider a regressive tax on our most vulnerable citizens. The state is eliminating the grocery tax and then putting the onus on the local communities to instill their own grocery tax. But I don't have a vote, so I will let the board discuss this item and see if we wanna put this on an agenda in the near future. Trustee DeVor?
Yeah, so as Mayor said, we are kinda coming down to a tight timeline on if we want to decide to implement our own grocery tax or not. We have, I think we would have to decide in the next meeting, I believe. Like, our next board meeting, we would have to decide if we would like to continue to implement that without any, like, delay in the funds. I have kinda tried to do some digging and with much help from Stephanie, it looks like even if we were to lose a grocery store, the amount of funds that we would be losing to not have, to not have our own grocery tax would be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually, give or take, depending on, like, you know, development. I don't think we have accurate numbers since Bex has been open and things like that. But that's kinda what we, I came up with, like, after doing the digging and some information from the mayor as well. So we just need to kinda, I guess, get a roundabout idea of what everyone's thinking if we wanna move forward to put this on the next agenda or not.
So you're saying even if we do lose a grocery store, knowing that one of the stores in our community is not renewing their lease?
Correct.
That number would be one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we would lose in sales tax?
Yes.
Annually?
Okay, yeah.
I, I prepared just a, a quick statement. If I could read it in the record.
Of course you would. Thank you.
Thanks. So, Mayor, when we talk about taxing groceries, we need to recognize that this kind of tax, as you said, is regressive. That means it takes a bigger share of income from low-income families than it does from higher-income families. Everyone buys groceries, but families living paycheck to paycheck, food makes up a much larger portion of their household budget. For example, if someone making twenty-five thousand dollars a year spends five thousand dollars annually on groceries, a one percent tax adds up and makes a real difference in their ability to cover other essentials. Meanwhile, someone earning a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, that, that same grocery tax is barely felt. The state of Illinois recognizes unfair burden and repealed the grocery tax precisely because it is regressive. To turn around and impose our own local tax would amount to a tax increase on our residents. Some may argue because the state expired, the state tax expires and the local tax could start immediately, there would be no gap, therefore it isn't tax increase. But let's be clear, timing does not change reality. If the state repeals the tax and we replace it with our own, residents are still paying a new tax that would not exist otherwise. Instituting a grocery tax here in Peoria Heights would undo the relief the state just gave our residents. And it would hit hardest the people who can afford it least. I know we've talked about the grocery tax before, Mayor, and I know I've spoken with several trustees about it. I oppose the tax increase. I think, you know, even though this board has done a great job living within our means, we've always ended the years, as long as I've been here since 2019, with at least three hundred-plus thousand dollars in surpluses. So to tax the force citizens in our community, I think that's a bad precedent, especially with, you know, prices going up because of tariffs and all that. It's hard out there. So if we could tighten our belt, I know Chief Sutton has done a great job, and the staff here have done a great job being frugal. I know that's not easy. I'm not saying it is. But this tax would hit the poorest people the hardest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Weisenberg, any other discussion on this item?
I would like to point out that grocery stores, we are losing a grocery store in our community. Looking at the, the people that don't have transportation and people in that, in that area, we, with losing that grocery store, they're gonna have to go to outside to the city of Peoria regardless to go grocery shopping. Peoria does have that tax right now. And one thing I do want us to just be aware of is that grocery stores run between one and two and a half percent in profit. They are one of the lowest-profit retail businesses in the market. And with that being said, having every dollar that we can to recruit a grocery store back here and to help them locate in the village of Peoria Heights, we, you know, we're blessed with having our real estate values go up. It's kept us in a place where the, where it actually benefits our homeowners and our landlords to reinvest their dollars into their property because the property values do, do go up. One of the side effects of that is the commercial real estate does increase in price. And with that being said, I've talked to some retail, some retail business owners that have much higher profit margin than grocery stores, and they do have issues coming into where the, where the, where the real estate price is going to be that high. With that being said, we are going to more than likely have to add something to incentivize a grocery store to come here to help facilitate getting food to our community so that we don't have, you know, the starts of a food desert in this area. The other thing, too, is we would be losing tax dollars to outside communities because they will shop elsewhere because there simply won't be an option here. And I think that's something that we just do need to be aware of. If we're gonna look at a tax, you know, a one percent tax increase on food, you know, is, you know, harder hitting on the lower economic spectrum, then I think we also need to consider that across the board with our water fees and things of that nature going forward. But with that mindset, there are costs associated, and one of those costs is recruiting grocery back to our community here next year.
Thank you. Trustees Steinwaddle. Any, I would just say one thing on that. The grocery tax, and I, I, I do see how we may wanna have an incentive for a grocery store to come in. I think if we incentivize, create an economic incentive for a grocery store to come in off the backs of the lowest-income people that feel that the most, it would not be a good service to our residents. I think we can do a economic incentives with the tools that we do have in place already. And I, I would encourage trustee Kazam, and if you wanted to, trustee Steinwaddle, with your background, to work with that and use our existing tools, whether it be the BDD or TIF Districts Enterprise Zones or what have you, to try to pull in a grocery store. I, I don't know if this would be the right tool to use to do that, but I could be wrong.
Would that even be possible, this suggestion, what trustee Steinwaddle is suggesting?
To earmark the
The one percent tax from food to be put into its own category to be used for recruitment of a new grocery store. I mean, is that even something you can do legally?
Well, there's a lot of ways that municipalities will transfer, in a way, they'll use the funds to incentivize. For example, a municipality of Cross River has bought a blighted property, and I was on the, representing the buyer that came in, purchased the property, and developed a national chain retail that went into that location. The community, the municipality, did see a loss from the amount of money that they spent to acquire the property, demolish the existing structure, and return it to flat ground. And they saw the value, long-term value in taking the loss and selling the land at the current market value for that area to turn around and have a national chain come in and start paying sales tax to that community for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. So there are other ways other than just having it in an escrow account that we give directly to them. There'd be some ways that we could incentivize future growth with retail.
Any other questions or comments on this matter? Trustee DeVor, did you wanna consensus on whether we should put this on the next agenda item as an action item, or what, what did you envision on this?
Um, I was, I was gonna say I feel like it needs to go to a vote. I think there's some torn decisions on it, so I would request that it's on the next agenda as a vote decision.
Okay. Any other objections to putting that on as a action item for our next meeting, September second?
Well, it says on this agenda that there is not going to be a meeting on September.
I think, I think trustee DeVor will touch on that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll put that on the agenda for September second.
I will prepare the ordinance.
Okay.
And I have prepared others, so there won't be a big outlay in case it's voted down.
Thank you. Okay, so, thank you for a good discussion on that. We'll move on to approval of a solar panel flashing stop sign at Lake and Boulevard. Trustee Weisenberg?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve the solar panel flashing stop sign at Lake and Boulevard.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Weisenberg and a second by trustee Kazam. Trustee Weisenberg?
Thanks, Mayor. Did we, listen, I'm not finding it. Did we get a price for this?
We just got a price today, and that was approximately seventeen thousand dollars.
No, seventeen hundred, I mean, I'm sorry. And then, and then shipping, so seventeen hundred plus shipping, somewhere under two thousand dollars. It's a big stop sign.
Yeah. Wow, made of gold. So, yeah, so this is just to approve the safety of that street. There's a lot of, especially at night, there's low visibility and cars are rushing through. And from what I understand, Peoria's gonna follow suit on the opposite side?
Correct. I made some follow-up calls. I wanna thank Chief Artis. He kinda directed me in the right direction on who to contact now, and that was pretty seamless. Got a lot, a really good reply. And Peoria said we will definitely do that on our side, and we will look, contact them when we're ready to install it, and they will do the same.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thanks.
Very seamless. So thanks again, Chief, and also thanks to Chief A. Hart for the traffic study, so.
Thanks, guys.
Any other questions or comments about the stop sign? If not, we'll have a, roll call vote on that, if you would. Clark Turner?
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move along to approval of a logo collaboration with Bradley University. Trustee Riker?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Riker and a second by trustee DeVor. Trustee Riker?
I don't have any information on this, so I'm gonna go to you.
I've kinda taken the lead, but I've worked with Superintendent Chandler on this, and do you wanna go over kinda the updates?
I can just say that originally, we thought it was a one color, and apparently the, the one other color, I think the one color is a specific red. But anyway, it's white and red, so we might have to buy a quart of red paint. We're talking thirty bucks, you know, nothing outrageous.
And Bradley, I understand, is providing the stencil.
They are preparing stencil, yes, so.
How big will this be?
So we had some measurements on that. But it's, it's large enough to be a noticeable.
Do you visible?
My guess would be it's probably four or five by five, maybe.
Will this be visible from the top of the tower?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
And it's gonna be on Kingman?
If you have the courage.
For the audience.
And, and Park Place?
Park Place, okay.
Any other discussion on this? We're okay with the thirty-dollar Sherwin-Williams purchase?
Better than the seventeen thousand dollars.
Did we budget for it?
I don't know if this is, I think this isn't a budget. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on that. Our, Clark Turner, I'm gonna make you trustee by the end of the night.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. We're also down to approval to become an Illinois two-hundred-and-fifty community. Trustee DeVor?
Forward with it, and so we decided here to approve it.
Yeah, do you want to just remind us of our responsibilities?
I don't, would you like to remind us of our responsibilities?
So I think for this, we have to plan an event.
Yeah.
Or make a financial contribution. I think the event sounds much more rewarding to our citizens than writing a check.
Yeah.
So.
Are we joining, are we starting a committee to plan? That was my question. Thank you. Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's a smart idea. And I think we had mentioned trustee, we had volunteered, voluntold trustee Riker for some of this as well.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you, trustee Riker, would be willing to, to head that up?
Sure.
Okay.
Trustee Weisenberg has some really good ideas.
Yeah, I think the carnival was a hit when we did it.
All right, let's put trustee Weisenberg.
No, no, no.
I'd be more than happy to help.
All right, we'll, we'll make you both co-chairs.
And to be clear, this is for, an event for next
For celebrating the two-hundred-fifty.
In, in, in two thousand, yeah, twenty-six.
Of the signing of the declaration.
This isn't like a next thirty days kind of deal.
Hurry.
Yeah, you've got a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that? All right, Clark Turner, would you call the roll?
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We're down to approval of the M F T resolution in the amount of three thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents for twenty-twenty-five P P U A T S dues, Peoria-Pekin Urbanized Area Transportation Study. Trustee Riker?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Riker, seconded by trustee Weisenberg. Trustee Riker?
Uh, from my understanding, this is something we do every year with them. It's very helpful, and I may say I don't have any other, it's just something we do every year.
Mayor, could you explain what this is again?
So I believe, and this, I may throw this to either our superintendent Chandler, but I believe that this allows us to utilize these M F T funds. Is that correct? So for us to be able to use them, we have to be part of this area study as well.
And that number should be larger next year with Bex being in service.
I hope so. They're packed.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, Clark Turner, would you mind calling the roll?
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll continue on to approval of bid for Glenn Sidewalk Replacement Program. Trustee Riker?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by trustee Riker, seconded by trustee Kazam. Trustee Riker?
Uh, we went up for bid for Glenn Avenue sidewalk ramps. We received four responses. Herman and Associates, Tri-County Regional Planning, they scored all of the responses and then let us know what the highest one was. It was Herman and Associates, so that'll be who we're going with.
What is the scope of work? Like, how many ramps are there? And from like, what, it's on Glenn, right? So from what block to what block?
I don't have that information.
I wish Mark was here. He, he was the one handling that. He also scored these. Trustee Kazam, but he is not available tonight, but I'll get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the engineering part of this, not, not the project itself.
But can we also get, like, what the engineering is gonna cost?
Yeah, there were, that, that was my question before the meeting, was if anybody had any pricing.
It's free. We got a grant for it.
Oh, okay.
Here's a grant, yes.
So, just full disclosure, so we had, we had some inside people helping us get that grant. I see our Peoria County Board member, Phelan, in the audience. He worked very hard on the Tri-County. He's a vice president of the, vice chair of the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, and I know he worked really hard to help us get that grant, so that's very appreciated, much appreciated. much appreciated.
So, unless I forgot, or I'm estimating, have we discussed this before, this project?
Yeah.
So what are we doing? Just like ramps for like wheelchairs to get on and off the road?
Yeah.
So it's not actual sidewalk replacements, we're just adding ramps?
We're making it accessible.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was a, was it a $40,000 grant, I think?
I think the goal, I think Wayne really had a goal of like getting all the sidewalks done, and we've just been applying for grants to help make that happen, and this is what we've been approved for thus far.
And I remember Wayne, you know, sort of had studied the issue, and it felt like Glenn was the most appropriate starting point. Not the only, but this, you gotta start somewhere.
And also, we have the burial, the burying of the power lines along Glenn, so I think this is a focused effort in one area. I think we also have to fix the ramps before we can get the road done.
Yeah. It's part of, like, if you're gonna do a full overlay of a road, you have to have all the, it has to all be up to snuff.
Okay. This is for Phase 1, so this is just engineering?
This is 397th Phase 1.
And so this is the approval of Herman and Associates as the contractor for this, so we're accepting the bid from Herman and Associates with this.
And that is on the website, as trustee just pointed out.
The Glenn Avenue ADA RFQ Addendum 1. It is on the website. Thank you.
Date on that.
July 24th, 2025.
Bid's closed, I think, on August 3rd?
I don't have that in front of me at this moment. Let me look at it.
Do August 1.
August 1.
August 1, okay.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? If not, Clark Turner, would you call the roll?
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVeau?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, we'll continue down to approval of cancellation of September 2nd, 2025 Board of Trustees Departmental Meeting. Trustee DeVeau?
I make a motion to deny the cancellation of the September 2nd, 2025 meeting.
Okay, fair enough. So we have a motion to deny the approval by trustee DeVeau and seconded by trustee Simmons. Trustee DeVeau?
Yeah, so, we actually have a lot coming up to be put on the agenda for September 2nd, so it's not really feasible for us to cancel this meeting. I know there was a lot that went through zoning last night that's gonna need to be on that, so I just think it's beneficial for us as a group to go ahead and keep that meeting and tackle quite a bit of things that we're gonna have for the agenda.
Sounds good to me. Any other comments on that? Okay, could we have a, I think we can do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of a purchase of fire gear in the amount of $8,708 from, help me out with pronunciation, chief, is that Din?
Dingus.
Dingus, thank you. Fire Company. Trustee Steinwaddle?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the fire gear.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Steinwaddle and a second by trustee Kazam. Trustee Steinwaddle?
So we have several new firemen coming on. We've had a few move on, and we're gonna be replacing some of our turnout gear. We have a longstanding relationship with Dingus Fire Company, and Lion Gear is top, top of the line. It's what we've purchased in the past, and it's great equipment. And this is a very fair bid for the two sets of gear that the fire chief is requesting.
So, looking at what we have in front of us, is this reflecting a discount that we received?
No, they were originally gonna ask for three sets of gear.
Okay.
And so, upon reviewing the equipment that we had and taking inventory of it, we moved it down to two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVeau?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll continue on to miscellaneous business. One discussion of a partnership opportunities with Epic within the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee Riker?
I'm gonna make a motion to table this. The representative from Epic could not make it tonight, so I will try to make sure she can be at the September 2nd meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to table, a motion to defer?
Def- defer, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to defer to September 2nd meeting by trustee Riker. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by trustee DeVeau. Any comments or questions on the motion to defer? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVeau?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Let's do a little bit more miscellaneous business. Are there any trustees wishing to report from their various committees?
Yes, I've got a couple things to bring up this evening. One of the things I'd like to touch on, in the past, we've gone with Home Field Energy, and right now, just looking at the rates, I know it's a common thing, discussion, looking at the rates right now, Home Field is locked in through the end of the year at 12.937 cents per kilowatt hour. Amarin is currently at 12.18, and expected October through May to drop to 8 to 9 cents per kilowatt hour. I was just curious if we had the information for our citizens to contact Home Field and move their service back to Amarin as a, on our website, if that was available.
We can put that on the website.
Okay. And the Amarin Energy, Amarin Efficiency Program is something else that's being funded pretty heavily right now, and I'd like to make sure we have a link for that on our website, if possible. For our, a lot of people within our community would fall under that. It goes off your adjusted gross income, so as long as a single person, for example, what they're paying taxes on is 55, I think, thousand or less, and they have a child in the home or an elderly person, they would qualify for everything from new furnaces to water heaters to insulation, to a lot of different things with the home, and that's, most of that is free to the homeowner. It's also available to landlords if the tenant qualifies as well. So I think that would be something of value to add to our, our website for our citizens.
Just one comment on that, trustee Steinwaddle. I think, just so the viewing public understands, 'cause I get a lot of calls on this every year, and if you do not respond to the information that's sent to you in the mail, that means you're, you automatically get rolled into this program.
The Home Field Energy. Yes, that's correct, everybody in the village. That was, at the time, I believe that was the right decision for the village to make. But right now, looking at the forecasted energy prices, it looks like it's gonna be a considerably, there could be a, there could be a considerable difference between Home Field and Amarin's pricing.
That's good information, thank you. I don't know that everybody understands, you know, they may not know, but we can opt out at any time.
They can opt out at any time, doesn't go to the current month, it goes to the month after. Mayor, could you, for those listening at home, could you explain when trustee Steinwaddle says Home Field Energy? Can you explain what the municipal aggregate agreement is and what the, the goal is?
So, right, it's basically to give our citizens a choice, and it's, this, the aggregation agreement from Home Field Energy, what they do is they go out and try to bid on energy to try to get a better deal from Amarin. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. And so, but part of that is the resident does have to, or the homeowner has to be cognizant of what the rates are. They do send those letters out, they are very transparent, but it does give the homeowner an option to get potentially a better deal. So, before the privatization, there, you basically had one choice, the utility. Now this gives some options to the homeowner, but sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and that's.
I know historically, they've been a lot cheaper than Amarin, but what's happened with the energy market here in the last couple of years?
With Ukraine.
It's weird, yeah. So it used to be that Home Field Energy, regardless, or whatever the company was, that aggregate, yeah, that aggregate agreement was always significantly lower than Amarin, but here, yeah, the last couple renewals, it's, it's been.
It's been rough.
It was the right decision. You're lucky if you wash, but it's, it's, the energy market is crazy, so. I just wanna make sure our citizens have the choice of pulling out of that now that they've seen the new energy.
Administration fields numerous calls on this, I mean, daily, just the confusion, you know? And they do a great job of, you know, navigating through it with them, but it's, it's a good, it's a good idea to put on the website if they can do some of that themselves, even though they still probably will call.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's a good, good option.
As far as the fire department goes, Chief Artis has done a lot of homework with a couple of his firemen and officers. We are looking at engines, and these are our reserve engines below the hill that we, I don't know if you, they've even used them since you've been on, but we're looking at some deferred maintenance on these engines. Just a list that I have in front of me for 52 and 54, looking at roughly $25,000 in repairs just to get these two an emergency serviceable vehicle. With that being said, getting rid of a vehicle, everybody's homeowner's insurance will have a component to it that's based off of a insurance service, I think, ISO rating, I can't remember what it stands for, but if our ISO rating goes up, then our homeowner's insurance could be negatively affected and increasing in, you know, price. So, with that being said, keeping vehicles and pump capacity and things like that is important. I'm not sure how getting, how much getting rid of one vehicle would affect that, but that would be something to look into. We do have, I talked extensively with Chief Artis about it, and we're looking into just implementing a kind of a vehicle replacement plan, a model of sorts, what have you, and we're looking into different vehicle options. Some of our, aside from our ladder trucks, motor vehicles, or machines, I guess I should say, are getting to the end of their service life. That doesn't mean they're unsafe or anything like that, but it's just a recommended timeframe that they be replaced in. I had spoken with him about purchasing used vehicles, 'cause that would save considerable amount of money. There are different, like, the ISO rated 1 departments in the area, they do replace their vehicles faster than what's recommended, and therefore, there's a lot of life left on the vehicles, they are newer vehicles, and we talked about maintenance program, reviewing maintenance programs, call history as far as how many runs they're making with the vehicles, and a lot of different options, a lot of different parameters to it, but we are looking into options as far as vehicles go, so I'm just making everybody aware of that. Our ladder truck will be paid off in September, I believe is what Administrator Sutton told me, so if you wanna clap for that, that's great, but our ladder truck will be paid off. I would like to, right now, continue those payments in our budget for adding them to the next vehicle, adding to another vehicle that we acquire. So not necessarily increasing the budget or decreasing the budget, but just keeping the budget the same and keeping that payment going, either to an escrow account. I do know that due to some reporting issues prior to Chief Artis, we are on, I guess you would call it kind of a probationary period, we cannot apply for grants through, for our fire department due to some reporting issues, so right now, that vehicle, we'll look into those as soon as that probationary period is over, but I would like to start at least eyeballing some vehicles and getting some options, identifying what we think that, you know, would be a good fit for the village as far as vehicles go, to make sure that we do maintain a fleet of vehicles that are all service-ready and usable, because I would always like to have every vehicle that we own be ready to go on a code 1 call to save a resident, so we're looking at that. So, if you guys have any questions about?
Yeah, quick follow-up question, if I could, chief?
And this is for Chief Artis. With the ISO rating, isn't, I know the fire trucks and the equipment is calculated into that rating, but isn't, aren't the fire hydrants as well, and how water's pumped? And could, are there any improvements while we look at our water system that could be done to fortify or reduce that ISO rating?
So trustee, you are correct. The, the water system and the water supply is a component of the ISO. I do not know offhand with regards to the work that's being done, if there's anything that can be done to, to help us as far as ISO rating, but I can certainly find out.
Okay.
We were more familiar with the internal operations rather than, since we didn't have anything to do with the, the fire hydrants, but I can certainly get that answer for you, but you are correct, that is a component.
Okay.
My question was on the ISO rating, is from my understanding, and I understand the number of machines you have, but I believe they all have to be operational. I think that's part of it, too, so I think we need to look at, you know, what those repairs are, but I think to meet that rating, everything has to be operational, it can't just be in a garage below the hill to meet that rating, so I think that's the thing we need to look at, too. I know that those, those repairs are quite, I mean, large, so.
Minister, you are correct, and I will say that the gentleman who gave us the estimate did say that there's a, there's a possibility that that price, that $25,000 increase, he wouldn't be able to tell until he got those operation, or up and at least running, so that $25,000 is a very, is a conservative estimate on those two. And lastly, if we, if the village and the trustees did decide to purchase a reserve, or a brand-new engine for that matter, either it's gonna have to be stationed at Station 1, or there's gonna have to be some significant adjustments to Station 2, because that, the bays will not accommodate a modern machine.
On a new machine also, isn't like a two-to-three-year wait?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I believe the used, the used machines you had looked at, they varied in price from 60 to 950,000, but you were estimating a new machine would be well over a million, correct?
Oh, yeah, oh, probably over 2 million.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate us looking at amortizing the cost of our replacement vehicles over the course of years. I think that is something that I have personally been saying for a little while, so I'm glad to hear that we're thinking about it, and we're paying off a big, big truck coming up, so that's great. Anything else, trustee Steinwaddle?
And that is it for right now, unless you wanna give a monthly report if you had those stats, if not.
I don't have the stats for August. I believe I gave the July, and I'd be more than happy to, to repeat the July stats if Uh, I don't have the stats for August. I, I believe I gave the July, um, and I'd be more than happy to, uh, to repeat the July stats if anybody would like.
No, that should be fine. You've, you've been pretty busy with this other stuff, so, thank you.
Any other trustees wanting to report?
I ha- I have an update I can-
Oh, sorry, Superintendent Chandler?
No, no, that's okay. No problem. I just have an update on some street work. Um, the spray patching is completed. That phase is done and we will be seal coating some streets in the Toledo area beginning on schedule Tuesday. So, we will be having some no parking signs out, just so everybody understands. You can park there during the night. We just want you to get up at six in the morning and move your car. So these guys can get the rock on the road and the tar on the road. Obviously, it might be easier if you're not parked out in front, but we're gonna, we are gonna have some no parking signs up and would appreciate the co- cooperation. And that will be taking place early next week.
Uh, Administrator, something?
No, Mayor.
Okay, okay. Uh, chief, anything for?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, so we're down to general comments from the audience. Um, if anyone would like to come to the podium, give your name, address, and try to keep your comments to five minutes. Comments going once, twice, comments are closed. We're down to payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills? Second.
I have a motion by trustee Kazam. Gonna give this to trustee DeVor, trust, trustee Reichert. So, seconded by trustee DeVor. Uh, any questions on the bills? You all have a copy of the bills in front of you. Any questions, comments about that? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're down to the treasurer's report. Clark Turner?
As of the end of June, there was eleven million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents in the village-controlled accounts. In the water-controlled account, there was two million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents as of the end of July. In the village-controlled accounts, there was eleven million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, forty dollars and sixty-five cents. And in water, there was two million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, you've heard the July and August treasurer's report. Are there any questions, comments on the treasurer's reports? Hearing none, we'll receive the treasurer's report by roll call. Or do we just? Yeah, no, do we have a motion second?
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion by trustee DeVor and seconded by trustee Simmons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Trustee DeVor?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn by trustee DeVor, seconded by trustee Kazam. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn. Having to meet you on the second.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm just kidding, no, the, uh, the tax.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got that too.
So, one, 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 uh, check I wanted to ask you guys about, specifically trustee Kazam.
Yes.
I'm seeing that I'm writing in checks to myself, trustee Steinwaddle, trustee DeVor, and trustee Simmons. For you, for-
She's probably thinking of those. No, I don't know, it's already been.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I think this may be, this may be-